Select boards meeting, Tuesday, June 25th, 6:30 PM. In attendance Chairman Fox, Vice Chairman Moguln, Clerk Mr. Dede, Mr. Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
All right, good evening and welcome to the select board meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. Before we begin the meeting, this is some sad news. We lost two individuals in town that were public servants, very active in the town of Southwick. Pauline Fedora was a school committee member before regionalization. She was also a member of the council on aging and she was also a volunteer and I think she worked the elections too. Very active in town politics. And the other was Norm Crowley. And Norm certainly was active in politics, but he also was a past assessor and a moderator. He was very proud of the fact that, I think Norm was the only moderator, democratic moderator ever elected in the town of Southwick. So Norm was, as you can tell, was a Democrat and he was very proud of that achievement. Both good friends of mine, I attended both funerals and we've lost some good people and dedicated people. So if we could have a moment of silence for those two people, please. Thank you. The first thing we have is public comments and that gives anyone that's not on the agenda an opportunity to make a statement to the select board. I ask that if you are going to make a statement, then please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to speak under public comments?
I'm here for Lakewood Village, so I'm on the agenda, so I'll wait.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right then.
And I'll reserve my comments. Well, I'm supposed to be on the agenda with 106 Berkshire.
You are, Roger. You are, Roger.
Yeah.
Okay. And Lakeview is on the agenda also. So what we're going to do first is acknowledge payables warrant 1931B dated 6/6/2019 in amount of $26,446.81. Acknowledge special payroll warrant number 1930 dated 6/5/19 in the amount of $9,054.48. Acknowledge payroll warrant number 1927 dated 6/11/19 in the amount of $289,716.46. Acknowledge payables warrant number 1930B dated 6/17/19 in the amount of $240,851.51. Acknowledge payables warrant 1932B dated 6/24/19 in the amount of $2,725,000. And that, of course, is the town share of the purchase of North Pond.
Right, closing is this one?
Closing. And acknowledge payables warrant 1931B dated 6/24/19 in the amount of-
I think that's a payroll warrant?
Yeah, I think it is too.
That's a payroll.
That's a payroll warrant. And then we need a motion to accept the minutes of 6/4/19.
Please. Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And work session minutes of 6/11/19.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. We can go right to the action folder. The first thing is approve the library director letter of understanding. And that's the individual that's going to be replacing Diane Caruso.
Yep, Lynn Blair and you've already signed off on that, so you're just making the motion.
Okay, so we need a-
Motion to re-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And she will be starting the, July 22nd. She'll be starting, but she's already working with Diane Caruso before Diane leaves at the end of this week for transition purposes.
Are, is there anything being done for Diane?
Yes, there's going to be something this Friday at 11:00 AM.
11:00 AM at the library?
At the library. You've already given her certificates of appreciation.
Right.
And titles.
Okay. Could you make sure, you're right, because Friday's going to be a very busy day, I think, for all of us, especially Joe because of the motocross, national, Saturday. A2, approve the posting of the Southwick Police Department sergeant positions.
Yep, I believe the chief of police also submitted a letter, so I don't know where it went.
Okay.
But it's along the same lines.
Is that the Phil Lindis' spot? Is that the list of the-
No, it's Phil Sergeant Sanford.
Sergeant.
Oh, oh, we're going to post this one.
He's retiring as of September 3rd.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So what you'd be doing is you-
I was trying to figure out, like, are you going to lose him?
We have, yes, we have some time.
Yeah, it's okay.
You would be just following the same posting requirements that you normally do under the posting document.
Right, yeah, because next week is July.
Which is set forth under the jaw description, which is an attachment to the union contract.
So, motion to approve the posting?
Motion to post.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next thing we have is the assignments of LEPC and Capcom. Oh, it's, okay.
It's your manual.
All right.
You know, like you designate, the board designate one member to be on the capital expenditure planning committee and then you designate some member to be on the emergency planning committee.
Well, I think we have two fine gentlemen that are doing an excellent job. Mr. Moguln on LEPC and Mr. Dede on Capcom. I would gladly accept a motion for that.
But do we put you on though? Let's slow down here. Let's, we don't want to rush this.
I think he already made a motion.
He's dying for lack of a second right now.
A second, a second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
No, I already see, I already see the train.
All right, I need, all in favor?
Aye.
So who's on which is the most clear?
That's me for LEPC.
Yeah, we may as well not change our roles now.
Right, you're doing an outstanding job, outstanding.
Yes.
So, why?
We should be outstanding somewhere.
Okay. All right, the next thing is the approval of fiscal 19-year end transfer. If we all have a copy. And you can see on the left-hand column are the increases and the decreases on the right-hand column, which balance out at the end.
And again, we went over the majority of these at our work session, Mr. Chairman.
Right, right. And it's a total-
So I had hoped to be able to carry some money in there for the stormwater issues that Randy's been dealing with, but the other issues came to light that had to be addressed relating to funds for tax title, for non-payment of taxes, and other issues relating to Medicare and closing out some cemetery line items for salary and, you know, EMS accounts and dispatch and some of these other issues had to be taken care of, as well as the retrofit on the garage for the, for the end.
Okay.
So these are all fairly known items from the work session.
Right, so as we all agreed on the work session, basically $316,831.80 are going to be spent to cover those costs that Mr. Steinhardt just mentioned. And that money is coming from money that existing accounts that we've moved over to cover those.
Right, that's pursuant to Mass General law, chapter 44, section 33B.
All right, so I need a motion to authorize the chairman to sign this. It's already been signed by the chairman of the finance committee.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, 5A is the second reading of the sick leave bank policy. I think everybody's reviewed it. I don't think there's any problems. All that was changed was some of the wording by labor council.
Do you need a vote on this?
Yeah, yeah. So a motion to approve, now that we've had the second reading.
It'll get incorporated in your, all of a sudden.
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 6A to ratify the maintenance position transfer in the building and grounds department.
And that, of course, was to transfer over Mr. Bedore from the evening maintenance position to the daytime ma- from the evening custodial position to the daytime maintenance position. And that was signed up by the chairperson herself.
Okay. So a motion to ratify?
Sumo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the evening custodial position was advertised last week by Cindy, so we're starting to get applications for that.
Big shoes to fill. He did a really good job.
Yep.
Well, he'll be here, he'll train the person.
We're very fortunate that we had him here.
Yeah, he's really worked out.
With the passing of John.
Yeah, he's great.
Glad somebody could step in. So that's great. All right, the next issue is the 106 Berkshire Avenue. So Roger, you're here to speak about that?
Yes.
Why don't you come on up? Randy's here, come on up. Please.
Happy to do this.
All right, Randy, you have the floor.
Okay, so this is an issue that was created many, many years ago. That came to light kind of recently, so, I'll give you a good map here. This is a survey of our property, 106 Berkshire Avenue. You can all see this.
I think we have that.
I think we have it.
You may have it, so, this is Berkshire Ave., here's Brayton Drive. There's a small parcel that is owned by the Congammon Heights Association. Roger's here on behalf of that association. This is a survey that they just recently had done on the property and as you can see, the road, Berkshire Ave., actually kind of cuts through the corner of this parcel. So it's been like this for, like I said, many, many years. I guess-
I'll make a little correction on that. When they put the sore line in and they repaved all the road in that area, they end up repaving it and then they went wider than that, where the existing road was. That's why that came around like that. Because that's when they would put the sore lines in, that basically wouldn't have, that wasn't in, oh.
Well, that was early 2000 if that was the case, yeah.
And we put the sore line in.
Yep.
Because I worked the jobs there.
So this is your fault?
You didn't say anything.
Sitting on this side of the table?
Yeah. They paved over my shoes, I was standing.
Right.
You got paid. I stood there, I stood there, I stood there so they wouldn't pave over my shoes, but they did it anyhow.
Anyways, Congammon Heights is looking to sell this parcel. Apparently they have an interested party, but there was an issue with the title because of this.
Corner.
Corner, that's now taking the corner of their parcel. So I had a conversation with Mark Begling a couple weeks ago about this, the letter, after the letter we got from the Congammon Heights Associations. Mark gave us basically the town, you know, three options. One is you can do nothing, ignore it, and then expect that the Congammon Heights will sue the town and go to court. And in that situation, you know, Mark feels pretty strongly that the town would win that lawsuit. I mean, this road has been in place for many, many years.
We understand that too.
Yep, we could go through the taking process and take the parcel or sliver of that parcel. Or option three is to work with Congammon Heights and secure a permanent easement for this use. Mark suggested the last option, that would be the probably least costly option. Talking with Roger, we could go us about it. Sounds like that they would also be amenable to that option. But we think I should talk to you and see what your thoughts are and kind of see what the next steps are, you know, what kind of your, what your thoughts are. And then, you know, Mark Begling will be looking for some guidance from the town, how to move forward with this issue.
I'd like to give just a little bit of a-
Go ahead.
A precast of what's happened to this piece of property. This was property that was donated to the association and we've been paying taxes on it since 1947. Okay? Well, the association started in 41, 3941, when we owned from Congammon Road all the way up to the town, the old town beach. They owned all that property. And they took and they developed all these lots. And this was the corner lot. What happened is, is they defunct at the end and didn't sell all the lot of the lots. So they donated to our association.
Sure.
But what happened is, is, first of all, I always tell you, yeah, we were paying the taxes on it since 47. And then in 2000, when the sore line went in, we've been paying the betterment tax on the sore line. So-
For that parcel.
For that parcel. Now, the scenario is here, when we had a buyer for it, we did a title search. The title search says we didn't own it. It still went back to the association because we didn't transfer, the membership didn't do the transfer for giving us the title. Then we come to find out, when we did have a buyer and did the title search, and we also went to the Board of Appeals and they approved it as a building lot.
Okay, that was my next question, yeah.
Right, we already have a letter from the Board of Appeals, they came out and checked it. They don't, they didn't have any issue with that, but our lawyer has an issue with that.
Did you end up getting clear title from the other organization?
Right, so in the product, now this has started two years ago.
Yep.
So we finally went and got a clear title from the previous owner, a landowner, which is Pollard. He gave us clear title to it, signed it off. Cost us like $4,000 to do that. Right. And then come to find out, we didn't have the sore line even to the property. Now, we've maintained and paying the town almost $7,000 in taxes.
And we appreciate that.
Yes. So you've been getting our tax money on both ends, but the sore, and the sore line wasn't even there.
But it goes by it.
No, didn't go by it. It stopped at the house before it. It stopped at 23, if you want to see that map.
It stopped at 23?
Well, I see that, yeah, the house before the corner lot. It stopped there. Now, so I went to the highway superintendent. I said, where's my stop for the sore line? And then they come to find out, it stopped at the land before. So we were paying the betterment tax of $8,000, which is half of what we owe. We still owe another $8,000.
Right.
So about three, and this is from highway superintendent, he gave us the letter, they came and put the sore in. So they dug up the road and gave us a sore. So, so we did accomplish, us the owner. Now we're in the sore, now we don't have to put a septic tank.
It's the last hiccup is this little corner parcel issue.
Right. But now that we came and got two lawyers involved with, because of the buyer, the buyer questioned that, they're saying, well, we can't sell it. Can't sell the piece of property because it's encroachment on it. And now, so we need to-
So they need your authorization for-
It's easier to connect to the sewer because it's right on your property.
They need your authorization, Russ, for Mark to draw up the easement. Uneasement. You don't have any problems with the easement?
No, I, no, I don't have any, any association, doesn't. Thing is, is-
Is the landowner okay with it? The new landowner okay with easement?
You mean the buyer?
The buyer, the, right, prospective buyer. We already have a deposit on it. We lost it two years ago.
I was going to ask, is it the same guy still for two years or no?
No, no, it's the second guy.
But the price went up though. So it worked out for everyone.
Well, actually, yes. The price went up.
Of course it did.
But now it's down by the time we're done there.
It was a great learning experience.
Well, I mean, we're a nonprofit organization to begin with.
Yeah.
And of course, paying that, all the taxes on.
True.
And the thing is, it doesn't, we're so-called a beach association. It's a land, piece of land that we can't afford to keep paying the taxes on.
No, so best thing you could do is do what you're doing.
Right, sell it off and you're going to make $5,000 in taxes by putting a house on it, rather than leaving an open land.
Sure.
So, we're trying to do the, might say, simple this way, but we know it's going to cost money no matter what it does.
So Randy, you're good with option three then?
Absolutely, yeah. I think, Roger, just to clarify, you got Board of Appeals approval a year and a half ago, but I think that it lapses after one year.
Yeah, it did.
So the new owner would have to go back for another variance.
Right, well, we already made the appointment, but because we had this glitch, he held off on it.
Okay.
And the Board of Appeals already said that they would approve it. They had no issue as long as they stay within the blueprint of what they approved.
Right.
You know, they already approved.
Right, the guidelines, the-
The setbacks and the sidelines.
The setback.
Because the corner lot, boy, it's going to have quite a bit of-
That's what they needed to relieve from, from the setbacks for the corner lot?
No.
Well, the-
No, it didn't affect, it actually didn't affect it because, I mean, actually, they're getting, they're going to get more land on, to the right.
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 Probably prior to zoning.
Oh, absolutely.
So why isn't it in front of Board, I, I just far feel this discussion, but why is this in front of Board of Appeals anyway?
Well, because it's a non-conforming lot, at the time.
Before zoning.
Yeah, I think it, it's the house, it's the house, front setback.
I don't, whatever, it's a separate discussion, I don't, I don't.
And they're working with them.
Yeah, and if they're going to approve it.
Let's not open up that can, let's not even go-
Well, we went through all the other steps and, and I was going to say, they approved it. And even after they found out that that had a little issue on it, they weren't concerned about it. I mean, Mr. Greg Wire, the chairman of the Board of Appeals, and-
Because really, it is what it is when you drive by it, nothing's going to change.
Well, you understand that.
Right, so it just needs the easement to cure the goof.
All right.
So your group is fine with it? So if, if we don't have any problems?
I am the president of it, so I'm the one that has to sign off on it. I have to sign off on it.
He's going to fire it.
Then I'll accept the motion to have Attorney Begling or whoever draw up. And let's get it signed so you can sell it.
There may be some, I don't know, easement plans that have to be developed. I don't know if that, Attorney Begling can do that himself, or that may be a surveyor firm that's a hire. There may be some costs associated with this, so I'm just trying to lay that out.
Can they work with you on the plan cost part? Who would you use on that one, Lebec?
Several, so, I mean, they had a survey done on this property, so.
Yeah, that is a survey, Salvini, he's their surveyor.
When was that survey done, Roger?
That was-
2015.
2015.
So he's got all the information.
He's got all the information.
Mark may just takes up on his plan and references it.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right. Well, we know there's going to be some legal costs and there might be some other costs, but I think, this is in the best interest of the association. Best interest of the town of Southwick, so. So if you make that motion, you second it?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So what's the tab for us plowing all this private road for this much time?
Well, that's what I also, that's what I wanted also bring up.
Ah, you had to have, didn't you?
You had to.
You just got to-
I'm going to plow, like I've been doing everything else. I'm going to take care of all the roads, we ain't going to give you that. And I know Dick Reynolds came to our association many years ago, that was way back a while, to have the town accept all the, you know, because they actually, all these roads belong to the association and the owners who live on the street. And there was a way of doing it, and I don't know what the legal way is, and I'm sure you know.
I'm not in tune with the process. I mean, there is a process and all, and you have to be, some coordination with the owners, not the association, but who's the Pollard, Pollard family.
Yeah.
No, they have, well-
Did they relinquish all the rights to the association?
Yeah, they don't have anything to do with the association.
Okay.
We are the association, we are the owners.
Of the roads?
Yes.
All those, all those lake roads have never been accepted.
They haven't been accepted by the town. All these, all these roads are-
They might be residual rights from the associations that created them.
Just like Westfield went into a blanket road thing for-
Dick Reynolds knows it because he talked about it, about what the process is, so.
Yeah, I thought he was dealing with Pollard directly, because I thought, because the original Pollard had passed away, the father, he was working with the son.
This is the son.
So the son actually had, he's the one who granted you the rights.
Right, he's the one who signed it off for us to-
Right.
Because he knew the deal was, it belonged to us, he signed off on it.
No, not this lot, but the road. Who owns the road?
Congammon Heights Association, Inc.
Or in the lieu of that, technically each person to the middle of the road.
Each and each to the middle of the road. All the landowners down on each road.
Right, I know that, I understand in most situations, but if this was, if it was owned by an association originally, it might still be if they weren't, I don't know.
Well, it belonged to the developer, and then that's how, that's how we-
This is before the existence of a planning board existed and zoning. Who approved these subdivisions along the lake on the water? What entity would have been the approved entity?
I have all, I have all the maps.
Actually, I saw it and someone had showed me, I don't know if it was Congammon Heights or if it was a different one, there's a whole other street that's actually in Congammon Lake that doesn't exist, literally. The drawing shows the road.
It's a paper road.
It's a paper street.
It's a waterway.
Like, would be on the beach.
That's White Street.
It's part of the canal.
That's White, it's White Street.
And there's, yeah, it just does not-
They don't show the road on it, on the map. All it does is give you the ripple of the-
But there was a road, literally, and that's something you guys took.
Lily, Lily, yeah, Lily something.
Lily Pond Way. It ran around a shoreline.
Right, yeah, right.
Actually, all these streets were named Echo Street, just too bad I bring, in 1939, the map was drawn for all that whole area.
Right.
For the, for the developers.
Because they would just do that and then they would file it.
Ted Kellogg was on the planning board.
Ted was on the-
Yeah, the father.
Oh, yeah, Doc's father.
Yeah, Doc's father, yeah.
You did your plan, you recorded your plan, you built your own.
Septic tank place. So you would go back, well, you don't go back.
Well, you'd want him on the planning board because Septic Tank, he's-
But that was the legal mechanism to split up the lots and sell out and convey them. Yeah, well, okay. But I, there is a process and, I mean, town council would know it, or maybe Dick knows it too. You know, I know for some subdivisions, there was a petition, a petition can be filed by a certain percentage of the residents. That's a high hurdle here because there's so many lots.
You've got 12 streets.
I understand.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm saying.
But I mean, and if you look at, the lots are so small, there's so many of them that would have to do, you know, you'd have to coordinate an effort. Maybe, perhaps there's another way to essentially take it, right, do a taking. And I don't know what the burden would be for that. I mean, like you said, Westfield did it too.
Westfield did a blanket, they went in and just said every street, that wasn't accepted, we're accepting them.
It was Chickaby, I think, did that.
Well, I know some of those communities that special act of legislation.
Right, to get it done.
Because then they don't meet the layout requirements of the law.
Well, if Chickaby did it, that was Jeff Neese, and I'm sure we can do it, because, I'll call Jeff tomorrow and see.
All right, I think we can move on to the next issue.
He's not talking to Paul, he'll talk to me.
Roger, thank you very much.
Thank you for working with us.
Cindy?
Yeah, good luck, Roger.
Would you want me to reach out to Mark?
Yeah, I'll send him an email.
You will, okay.
Yep. And then what we'll do is we'll start out using Salvini's draw.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's 1941, association started. 1939 is when they drew the maps up for this, the whole, the whole, all the streets from Congammon up to the town beat.
Are you in one of those pictures from back then or no?
On the ice house?
I was born in '40.
Okay. You're in there somewhere.
I was born in '40.
Wow, you know, that's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Is one of your speakers for your 250th?
Yeah, somebody should speak about that at the 250th next year. We're having different speakers and talk, when they talk about the lakes, maybe somebody from the association would also speak about the association and establishing it and things of that nature, things that have happened.
We still have some of the stuff from when the ice houses were on our property. In fact, my, I live on Field Street, I had part of the foundation from an ice house still across my driveway. And I had them dig it up when I had it repaved again because it was a little cracked.
Did Dave have one on his side of the road too?
No, it was on my side, because it came across Berkshire Ave., right across from Flags and it comes right through.
Several lodge ice houses, we often read the stories about.
It was like five, 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 five ice houses.
It was big business, big business.
Back in the-
Cut the ice right on the train and right to New York City and-
Right.
And they could keep it till August. The history I read, yeah. It's amazing.
Well, my father always talked about picking up the ice and carrying it up and-
Oh, he did, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have some, uh.
Pole.
Yeah.
And during probation, there might have been other things in the pole sack, because they didn't arrest young kids, so.
And about the property of owning it, that's why we've always had some people coming in, and I know there's been, people come to your board. And saying, like, own the beach or own the property on it.
Yeah.
Our association still owns it, even though there's nothing built on it.
Yeah.
We have the maps and the deeds to show that there are some open spaces.
He's talking about.
Yeah, Ludo, you had Ludo, Mr. Ludo.
And all, all he's gotta do is, they'll buy the permit firm, he just needs to pay his dues to them, so.
Well, I went to them, you know what, and he wanted, he doesn't want to do anything, he wanted, he said to me, he said, why don't we deed him the property?
Well, that's, you have to work that out.
Well, I know, but that, that is his attitude. I says, why don't you become a member of our association, then you could buy, pay the, and we'll pay the doc fee.
He'll do it for us.
And you can use it. And he said, well, I like to get, why don't you just deed it to me, or deed to him? And it's only a little, the reason why we gave him permission to use it, and it did, I saw a letter that he had.
Yeah.
The past president gave him permission to use it.
Yeah.
And it was just a slice, a sliver on the end of it.
Right.
Because we end up owning it, and we sold a piece of it to Calvin Arnold, because he didn't have right to the house.
Right, the end of it.
The, the end of it, the end of the street, ten feet of that was Berkshire Avenue to the lake.
So they could walk down there to a boat.
Right, from Berkshire Avenue.
Right.
The easement.
So, we sold him that piece, because it was a house that they had to cross our property to get to the, their property. So we sold him that easement.
Yeah, right.
So that they could get to the property.
Okay.
And then, of course, out Calvin Arnold, he passed away, and it's young Calvin.
Young Calvin, yeah.
So, but that's what happened on that one.
Well, talk to your association, this would be interesting for next year, the two fiftieth, when they're, they're gonna do something on the lakes. But this might be a good part, uh, to play a part in that, to talk about the association, the role they play.
How do you think, Roger, we're looking at a costume?
He's on a costume, I've seen him in costumes before, walking up and down the streets, but that was probably a little different.
With the badges.
And the sandwich boards.
I've had, I've, I've, I've long enough to have a costume, I don't wanna have it anymore.
You didn't, you didn't expect to take this kind of abuse here, did you?
I didn't come here to be made.
I'm used to it.
Yeah, you've been on this.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Been on that side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, thank you.
All right, thank you, and, uh, what, uh.
Randy will be in touch.
Be in touch, so I can just tell, well.
I got, I got more.
Yeah, we'll.
All right.
We'll be in touch, Roger.
He'll be in touch, Roger.
Just to stop by to talk to you?
Yeah.
All right, my lawyer, my lawyer is hot on that, he said, we ain't paying for another lawyer again.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight A is a, uh, the Southwick Fire Department Chief is asking us to request a change in appointment status for Clark Robinson from EMT to EMT firefighter. So, I need a motion to approve that change.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Cindy? That's a duplicate, so you can have that too. Uh, the next is.
The fire one?
No, we haven't signed anything tonight. We won't start signing things now?
Moving, moving right along, moving right along.
It's the old clerk habit.
We haven't signed anything, I've been watching.
I, I'm gonna.
I wanna write a letter.
Do we have a marker to sign this?
Right in front of you.
How about that, you gonna sign that, Joe?
Highlighter, well, actually, this one, no, I don't wanna sign this one.
All right. This is a certificate of appreciation, Ellen Miles. Uh, small token of our appreciation for your outstanding achievements and dedication to town of Southwick, was serving on the historical commission.
What's that Helen Reddy song?
She did a great job.
Wasn't that evil? I don't know, work with me here, Carl.
It's before his time.
Newton or Fred about coming in, like, on the ninth?
I gave you a couple dates, right?
No, and I said, we'll go with the ninth, but what time could they come? Could you just figure out what time they can?
I thought it was, I told him like mid-morning.
Right, but, so if you could just firm up the time, whether it's, cause remember, we wanna invite some other people, so.
All right, the next thing we have is, we have to approve donations to the Southwick Police Department gift account. Uh, donations of, uh, two hundred and sixty-five dollars were received in the memory of Janice Camisa. Uh, she's, was the widow of John Camisa, who was a police officer, passed away several years ago. So if we could make a motion to accept that.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, since the clerk has made issue of this, can we please sign this?
There's also another one.
Boy, there's another one, ten A.
Ten A, so there's one in the back.
Oh.
From the weeds.
Yeah. The anonymous.
Okay, we have another donation, um, from Luis Alberti. Uh, to the Citizens Police Academy of twenty-five dollars. I need a motion to accept that.
Yeah, okay, I saw that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign both of those. All right, and now we get to Randy and his recommendations for, uh.
The annual bids.
Annual bids. Go ahead, you wanna give us the short version?
Yeah, I'll show you.
Okay.
Um, so we did eight bids, opened eight bids, um, on June twelfth. So, uh, first item is borrow materials, um, we've got three bids, John S. Lane is the one we use most often. We do, uh, have, um, frequent, you know, materials from Andrick Materials and Crestview Construction as well. Um, so I'm looking to move forward with John S. Lane as a primary provider for borrow materials. There are some materials that they don't provide that we do get through Andrick and Crestview. Um, John S. Lane's been great, you know, their, their bids increased about two to three percent from last year. Um, guardrails, we got actually a couple of new names in the guardrail business, which was exciting, um, we got four bids. Uh, Guardrail Solutions is a new company, um, by a Southwick resident, and they were a little bitter. Um, the pricing did drop a little bit from last year, remember last year, there was a huge increase because of the steel pricing and trade wars with China. Um, so it's still up, but, uh, Guardrail Solutions, they provide the number, the lowest number for guardrail pricing. Uh, heavy equipment.
And their references were okay.
Their references came up. Uh, heavy equipment, uh, we got one bid from Crestview, they've been doing this contract for many years. Uh, this is a setup as a three-year contract, well, one-year contract with two one-year options to renew it by the town. Um, their pricing didn't change all that much, um, from last couple of years, um, zero to five percent, depending on what, uh, unit price item you're looking at. Um, so, again, Crestview's been, been a great, uh, partner with us. They got a lot of projects on their plate, and we're trying to push to get them forward, move forward with it, with. But, uh, we've moved, like, to move forward with Crestview again on that project, like, on that contract. Uh, line striping, we got, uh, two bids, Highway Safety and Markings, Inc., um, Highway Safety did a very poor job for us several years ago. And we have rejected their bids the last three years, and we'd be looking at the same thing this year. Um, Marking, Inc.'s has done a really nice job for us, their pricing was just a little bit higher than Highway Safety, but, um, Highway Safety, you know, just, they just don't have the skills, um, to be considered.
The other vendors the board would never wanna use.
Yeah. Uh, pavement materials, uh, we got, uh, four bids. Uh, these are all, all of our, you know, uh, materials that we buy at the asphalt plant, cold patch, hot mix. Um, that we use, you know, for our own internal projects that we, we've been in, in pave for. Um, so we got, uh, uh, five different items on the pavement materials, and you can see the little bitters, they all varied. Between Andrick Northeast Paving, which is formerly Land Construction, um, and those are the, you know, and, uh, Andrick as well. Andrick, Andrick Natural Earth and Andrick Materials are two separate companies, so you can see that pricing.
These are not hot patch roads, these are not hot paving for roads, these are just materials.
So if we're gonna patch, you know, pothole pairs or do like a small patch, you know.
Randy's still gonna be doing the other jobs that we met a few weeks ago by bidding those out.
Yep, yeah, those are up to bid right now, those projects. Uh, surface treatments, um, these are the chip seals, crack seals, the micro seals that we've done in the past. Um, we got two bids, one from All States, they only do the chip seal. And then Indus, they do, um, all the other products, all the other, um, categories, and they're formerly Norman Seal Coating. So you may recognize that name from the past. Uh, you can see the prices have gone up a little bit from past years, um, for most of these items. But these are the only two bids that we got for these items. And the last bid was, or I'm sorry, the second last was sidewalks. Um, we should talk about this for a minute, for a minute.
Don't even have to talk about it. You can re-advertise it, sir.
Okay, we can.
Thank you.
We already know him.
Yep.
The price was ridiculous too, anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you see the price, so I, I, I bid that out to do the depot street project, and you can see the number that they came in, a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars to do a thousand feet of sidewalk.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping that if we go up to rebid, um, what I may need to do is, is increase the unit price. So, could get a better unit price.
More linear feet, you mean?
That means I have to, have to commit to doing more linear feet of sidewalk, if that's, you know, beneficial to you.
And that would be what, what would be the other location you'd wanna do?
Well, we wanna do some sidewalks on Granville Road, we've got, um, um, the Red Oak Neighborhood. Uh, has some sidewalk repairs and, um, is another one.
And the, and the price, so let me come and dig it out, do the whole thing, right?
To basically tear it up and replay, re-pour, new sidewalk, yep, yep.
Reseed and re-everything?
Yes, a moment seed really need to, yep.
Cause in the past, wasn't it like forty dollars a foot?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I expected somewhere between, you know, forty, fifty, maybe sixty bucks a foot. And I got pricing from other communities, you know, and that's kinda like, you know, in the range of where.
I, I got some people I could put pressure on for that, you'll have a.
If you know anybody, yeah.
I do.
Okay. Um, and the last item was emergency tree service contract, we got two bids from Top Notch and Northern Tree. Uh, Top Notch was the, the current contractor, and they, and they had the lowest pricing again for this fiscal year, so. So we're looking to move forward with Top Notch again this year. So that's where we're at. Um, Carl did mention the, the paving projects, we talked, last two weeks, we met ago about the, to move forward with several paving projects. Um, we do have those out on the street, and we're opening bids on those on July twelfth, I believe, or nine, that Wednesday.
Wonderful, is that the tenth?
I think it's the tenth. I'm sorry, it's the tenth, yeah, July tenth. So, um, we'll see how those numbers come in.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the recommendation of DPW Director Randall Brown.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got enough to vote for that? Yep, yep, the whole, the whole package, he's taken each of his recommendations, just include approvals and.
Thank you, Randy. Oh, but, why don't you sit back down?
Oh, boy, you might wanna sit down for this.
No, I mean, while, while you're right here, I, I know everybody, if you wanna sign that, Joe.
Oh.
Everybody's been getting emails or copies of letters, things like that. Uh, the first, I think we got something from, uh, someone on Metal Lane.
Yeah, I'm supposed to meet with him, nice guy, had a nice long car.
Oh, they.
Talked to Randy about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just look at his potholes fixed, you know, he's on the list.
Yeah.
If you let him vent for like a half hour, Russ, people feel better.
I don't need, because I, I talked to his brother, and I said, you were talking to Jeff, because I'm, I'm straightening him out. But, uh, we all went to school together, so it wasn't, it wasn't too hard.
They mentioned he didn't like you, okay.
Oh, did he say that?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, and then the other one was, uh, the Congammon Road, uh, with the wall issue. Where are we on?
Next.
Well, it's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Wanna wait?
Okay, okay.
Can, uh.
Some of us, we, our, our stuff's ahead of time, and some of us don't, Randy, so.
Well, you know.
Some of us are well aware.
Coming up right.
It's coming right up, but.
So, the next, the next one's in FYI anyways.
Right.
Right, there you go.
All right. So why don't we, while Randy's sitting right there, why don't we discuss the letter?
The wall.
And, and, and the wall.
The Pink Floyd wall.
It's expensive.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I sent, I saw the letter from Mr. Crosser, and I prepared a response to Cindy, and I had some pictures and some attachments, so do you have all that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, I wish he had come to us several years ago with this question and concern, cause it could have been incorporated and, and, and fully paid for, paid for by, you know, the, by the, by the state. You know, at this point in the game, I'm not sure that's gonna happen, you know, if we go to the town, if we go to DOT and say, we need a wall at this property, they're gonna say, okay, well, you can pay for it.
Right.
That's the issue. So.
Your agreement with them passes a certain dollar point, makes you responsible.
I, I have asked DOT for an update on the, the kinda like their, their budget sheets, and I haven't received that yet. So I don't know, I don't know where they're at with their budget, I know they did have some overruns, you know, with some rock and other issues. Um, you know, there was a couple hundred thousand dollars in contingency, that's, you know, their responsibility, but, you know, I would suspect that, if this moves forward, that's gonna probably trigger that threshold, if it, you know.
Like exceed it, that would then make us liable.
That would make the town liable for.
The balance.
Right, full or partial.
Which is a typical boil of play contract.
Right. So I, I haven't had that direct conversation with DOT, you know.
Yeah.
I can certainly have that conversation with them, and, and, and they can direct the contractor to prepare pricing. You know, I mean, I'm only giving you budget numbers here, but they can ask the contractor to provide a price, and then we can see where that comes in, and if, so.
What do they, what, how many years will it take them to build a?
I, it sounds crazy, and the number is crazy high.
But look at the contractor Randy's dealing with down there.
That's what I'm saying of all people that ask, yeah.
What, what are they planning to do, just slope that down?
It, so the plan was to show basically a two to one slope, which, which matches what's there now.
Right.
Prior to construction, there was a pretty steep slope right from the property.
Yeah.
It's being pushed back closer to the house, but maintaining that same slope.
That's what changes the view for the person, because if you put the retaining wall out further and you fill in that slope.
True.
Then it, it maintains your yard size.
Right.
So it's a perception thing.
Right.
All right, well, it's unfortunate, you're, you're absolutely correct, we had hearings, we've met with people. Was that part of the land taking?
There's an easement on that part, on that area we're talking, yeah, for the regreting purposes, yeah.
That was paid for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. So, it's really, you know, coming at, at, at the wrong time. I mean, it's, it's something where.
We've all sat through those hearings before, mass DOT, that's the time to do it.
Well, especially when you already got paid for something too.
Well, yeah, but that's like Randy said, that payment is for a temporary construction easement.
Oh, there was just. Well, it's for use, yeah, easement for use of the property during construction, so, so we can have guys on.
No.
There, there was a taking, but it was further down for utility pole, not, not right where we're talking about here, with the slope, so.
Okay. All right.
But, and the slope is the same as it was when it was pre-construction, it's just closer to the town.
Just gonna lose.
Right, right.
Yeah, you can see the pictures here, you know, pre and post, and.
That's the color picture.
And, and this is gonna be built up too, so this is, you know.
Yeah.
Gravel, it's still gonna, that road's gonna be built up by about eleven inches before you get to finish grade. So, you know, it won't be as, quite as even as shown there, it is still gonna be two to one.
Right.
But it was two to one before.
Right, but it was just further away.
I get it.
Yeah.
But if, if you could maintain it at two to one.
Then.
On our feet from your house.
Right.
You could still maintain it two to one at eighty feet from your house, or whatever the distance is.
Yeah, understood.
It is close to some of the houses.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he, and, yeah.
But that's the way the road layout worked?
Well, that's why we had the hearings. And that's why it's a state project.
And I'm sure this wouldn't even be in front of us today if it was a different contractor. But they're just so upset down, down that road.
No, you could be right on that.
Because it would have been done.
It would have been done by now.
Right.
Right. And is that the truth, right? I mean, if they were not, if they were done, they were done.
Is he part of the J and L?
Who knows?
Do we have any new updates? I saw the things he sent about different dates, uh, when we asked him, but.
Yeah, I mean, nothing more than that, it's, it's like quality, getting any information, schedule wise, I don't know. I mean, they're still, they're still gonna be here till fall.
Right, we know that, yeah, yeah.
But do you think we'll be fully done and plowable by the fall?
I would, I would think so, yeah. I mean, right now, they're working on the eastern side, or western side. A lot of cuts and fills, so it's gonna be a lot slower than they were on the other side, where it was all pretty straight and flat.
Right.
Uh, before they can put some more asphalt down.
Right.
As Chairman of the Board of.
Because the guy with the teaspoon called out sick for a couple of days.
Yeah. As Chairman of the Board of, I think you can notify all those residents, they probably won't have a sidewalk left to worry about this winter.
I, I already had several people come to see me.
You think, I bet you the sidewalks won't be in by.
They have a con, I mean, again, there's a contract that says they have to be done by.
I'll bet you a dollar that those sidewalks will not be in this year. Because they're not gonna be done this year. Right? They're not, there's no way they're gonna be, no.
Okay, you guys can.
Well, you know, make a wager for an ice cream.
Well, you know what's even funnier is if you go over and ask them something, they go out and dig up something that needed, that didn't need to be dug up for three months anyway.
Right. Just to get you.
All right.
Well, then maybe I'll ask them about sidewalks, so then maybe they will.
Okay, so.
No, they'll dig a hole for them and not put it in.
You've, you've sent something back to Mr. Crozler?
No, not since he sent this letter. He, he met with me, or he, he talked to me maybe two weeks ago. And I kinda said the same thing in my letter that I told him, I, he said, well, I'm gonna talk to select board. So, that's when he approached Cindy and he wrote a letter. So, no one's responded to him since he sent this.
Okay, so we need to respond to Mr. Crozler. You wanna draft a?
Give me some, give me some words and I'll put it to form.
Okay.
We're glad they make a motion for the Chair to deal with this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, I, I did graduate with him, so thank you very much.
Oh, so then you're, you're like best.
You're right there, yeah. I don't know what graduating's like, so.
All right, Randy, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Can you help with that letter, Carl? Let me know, I can send it.
Yes, sir. Yep.
All right, the other one, twelve A, is, uh, ribbon cutting that is gonna take place on July twelfth, two thousand nineteen at four P M. at, uh, the former Sky Box, which is now going to be named Rail Trail Hale House at Twenty-three Point Grove Road in Southwick. So, the Chamber of Commerce, Kate Phelan, is inviting us along with everyone else to attend. Uh, so, Cindy, if you can remind everybody.
It's a great idea to do that kind of place opening at a four o'clock on Friday.
Is that one?
That is a fantastic idea.
That is a, a Friday, you were correct. All right.
So, Randy, you're already gonna be there, everybody.
She's already be full.
All right. All right, I got a thirteen A. Oh, that's Mr. Crozler, okay. Okay, we have all business, the host community agreements?
Yep, we still have not got the numbers from the, um, Southwick Greenhouses.
Okay.
And their attorney.
So, that is still being tabled?
We'll have to see how long their, um, host, really the host agreement public hearing will, will go. I know the other place, the other place has expired, so they're doing theirs over.
I think it's this Wednesday.
Yeah, they're having theirs again.
Tomorrow at Roma's.
Galax and Pistols.
Gonna do it again?
Yeah, they timed out.
Because they, they timed out while they were away in other country.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, next thing under all business is the, uh, proposed, uh, gun range that would be set up on, uh, the parcel, same parcel where we have the transfer station. Uh, the three board members met with Lieutenant Landis.
Yeah.
And took a tour, we have maps. There's been approval given by the DPW Director, doesn't have an issue with the location. Um, Mass D E P.
You're okay with those?
They're okay with the location. Um, we took a tour. What was that?
Free of ticks?
Definitely not.
No.
You know, and I, apparently according to what Lieutenant Landis said, apparently there's some local business people that'll help, uh.
That's what they say.
Establish the, uh, facility. And we all know the reason for this, we've been looking at several different areas, uh, because of the new training regulations for our full-time officers and our reserve officers.
It's crazy.
And, and this would.
Travel time, overtime.
Travel time, overtime issues, so this, this, uh, if it works, uh, would, uh, save the town of Southwick and the taxpayers a lot of money. Uh, it's not gonna be every day, it's.
It's not open to the public.
It's not open to the public, strictly for the police training, so.
Could they be doing that on like Mondays when the facility's closed?
We talked to Lieutenant Landis about scheduling and he said he would work with us.
Or Thursdays, right, yeah.
Work with the town.
Pretty much weekdays and it would very much be during certain hours, he had said.
Right, right.
Well, you could put, you can certainly qualify that not to be any day beyond a Monday or a Thursday, because its opening hours don't cover those days.
Okay, we could, we can work on that, uh, with the DPW Director and also I think we wanna perhaps involve the Cemetery Commissioners also. Uh, I don't think we want.
Get a lot of complaints down there?
A service going on, uh, perhaps would be some, uh.
Background music?
Yeah, some. People would be aware there's a service going on at a certain time and perhaps.
Yes.
Reschedule it or hold off.
Definitely good consideration on that.
I've already heard from a couple of golfers and I told them, well, you know, you'll improve your game.
Well, me and Doug heard from some residents when we were out there.
Yeah.
I, I heard you heard that.
And they wanted to have a special town meeting so they could vote this down.
Really?
Because, yeah, they didn't want taxpayers' money being used and I said, who told you it was taxpayers' money being, wow, it's gotta be. He said, nope, nope.
For what? Taxpayer money for.
To, to anything to do with this project, anything at all.
Not if the police are getting.
They want another town, special town meeting for it.
All right, I need a motion to approve with, uh, every, everything we've said contingent upon, and we're working with DPW, working with the Cemetery Commission, working with Board of Selectmen.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's sign this. Now we finally get to you. I'm sorry that it was the last thing, but come on up. And Randy, why don't you come up because, and this is concerning Lakeview Village Sewer Connection Project Update. Do you wanna take the floor?
Sure, so we've been working with Mary for several years now to try to extend the sewer line to capture four, the remaining four buildings on her property. Um, the town and Lakewood Village came to agreement six, seven years ago, and it's a sewer, six buildings?
Ten.
Ten, six of the ten, right?
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, okay, sorry. So, ten years ago that was done.
Yeah.
So, they're looking to kinda complete that and then sewer the remaining four. These are the four that are closest to Point Grove Road. So, it requires the sewer line on Point Grove to be extended all the way to the property. Um, and then they would tie in, there's, there's four laterals. So, along the way, there are fourteen properties that could directly benefit from this sewer line. In addition, there are properties on Two States Avenue that could also tie in eventually down the road. So, Mary has met with the Sewer Implementation Committee several times over the past two to three months. Um, and, uh, we've looked at, uh, you know, the, the, kind of the numbers, you know, what, what the breakdown of cost would be. Um, and we do have a, a contract that, uh, has been reviewed by both Mary's lawyers and also Bacon Wilson, I believe, right, crack roll?
Uh, they have looked at it, but I'm not sure where they are in that process. But they sent comments back to her counsel and you and me.
But in principle, we're on a roll.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you know, we're just about there, that's why what you could do, uh, as we finalize this, is authorize the Chair to sign it. And then that way you don't have to wait.
Sounds like an excellent idea.
You don't have to wait.
You just do that now and let him get the whole mess.
Yeah, we can just cut this off and be done.
So, a lot of this.
And perhaps it's the vice chairman, oh, he gets to sign it.
Oh, wait. So, when, wait.
What?
So, so, in the meantime, Mary has gotten and secured quotes from several contractors to construct this work. So, as in the past, all the construction costs will be borne by Lakewood Village. And they've got, I think, three or four quotes.
We've three.
You got three quotes. Uh, the low, the low, there was, um, Raymakers and Sons.
Yeah.
They built the pump station for us a year ago.
They did, they did well for you on that?
They were very happy with them, yeah, so I, I think they'll be very good. And they, I guess they were very competitive on this project, so Mary's happy with that end of it.
We actually were the ones that really asked them those questions and defended things a lot, too.
And they've indicated that they have availability this summer to construct this pipeline. So, I think, you know, from Mary's standpoint, and the sooner we can get this squared away, the sooner we can get, uh, rolling and, and building and getting those four buildings tied in.
And so, in lieu of, by having them construct it, they get a, basically a credit?
So, so, yeah, so there is a connection fee due to the town based on the number of EDUs. And each building has, um, one, two, one or, one or two bedrooms or, or call efficiencies, which is kinda like a studio, I take it, right? So, based on the EDU formula, we've come up with this thirty-two point three one EDUs that are due to the town. And there's a number for pre-EDU. Now, the cost, when you're putting a sewer line down the road, it makes a lot of sense to put the laterals into all adjacent property owners, right? At this time with their contractor. So, that, those laterals doesn't, but don't benefit Lakewood Village at all, they benefit the town.
Right.
So, she's asked for a credit of that cost, um, to be taken out of her connection fee. And she also asked that, uh, the contractors submit that pricing, you know, in writing, you know, what is the cost of the main versus the cost of the connection fee, so we can break that out.
Sure.
On the connection, which, you know, seems, seems reasonable. So, she has done that and I think, um.
What did it come out to, Mary?
Twenty. It was like twenty-three thousand plus.
Twenty-six thousand, two sixty-three, here's the actual.
Fifty-nine thousand was the, um, cost of the.
Right, but I meant, I meant, once those, that's netted out.
Right.
The assessment part, the payments come to the town on the first part of the signing of the agreement and then I guess when the work is done. So, that's when the town, and you've done that before with other sewer.
Yep.
Connection issues.
This is a great idea.
Yeah, this is, this seems like.
It just took a while.
And it's been a long road, right? You've been in front of us last three years on and off.
And we got our calculator out again today and.
Yeah, yeah.
Put the numbers.
Um, well, we really appreciate all the work with the Sewer Implementation Committee, both two thousand fifteen and sixteen, and then, you know, the town wasn't quite ready with their formulas and so it kinda got put on hold and we got the word, you know, in December.
It has been beneficial for me.
And it has been beneficial for us. Um, and, you know, it's, we are putting a thousand feet down the road that'll become the town's.
Yep.
Hundred sixty-five thousand plus the lateral cost.
Right.
You know, it's a substantial.
It is.
Um, and we also lowered it because they wanted it deeper, um, in case Southfield, um, hooks up.
If they ever.
Was about another fifty grand.
Oh, you had to accommodate for the potential Southfield.
Well, it wouldn't hurt while you're there to.
Right, right, well, it hurt about fifty grand worth.
Yay!
Most of Southfield is revisiting, they're coming back at some point.
Yeah, some point they will.
Actually, Jerry and I were at that, that's, we're in fighting and they were asking us about it.
So, we, um, we have four buildings left and we figure this is the only way we're gonna see the sewer down.
And you are correct.
Yep.
Um, and we have four buildings left, three of them have very, you know, original septic systems. Um, one of them, we spent a lot of money fifteen years ago or so putting in a new system. Um, and so we've asked, and it's been agreed upon that we won't hook that building up, building, the efficiency building, until it, until we want to or it fails, whichever comes first.
Yep.
Um, so we're gonna bring the line down Point Grove Road, once it reaches the manhole at the end, you know, in front of our last building, they'll be all tested and approved, um, and then they'll start in. But we're just gonna have a stub coming onto our property for that building, it won't be connected yet. And then, but we're paying the EDUs now because that's what, um, was requested. Um, so when we do go to hook up, it'll just, you know, be on our property, it won't involve digging up the road, it won't involve any of that. We can just, you know, we'll start paying the sewer fees on that building at that time. But we'll hook up the other three now. Um, and we've cut down a lot of trees already, um, in the last month to where the sewer was going, went through some of our. We still have a lot of trees left, but we took down trees.
Let me, let me ask you a question, um, what's the estimated flow, Randy? Once all these units are all hooked in?
Oh.
I mean, in terms of, you know, we're at like one seventy-five under the I M A.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we're creeping up to like about two hundred now.
Yeah, not quite, I mean, we're plenty of capacity, I didn't even.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering what, what you guys thought, and your engineer ran the numbers, what you thought.
I have it out in the car.
Was that Shaheen, did it?
Yeah.
Same person?
Yeah, yeah. Um, we, you know, we, we're really water, we've gone through, we've done all the little fluid toilets.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not imagining it's a lot, I was just wondering what the flow was.
Some, it's like twenty-five, thirty gallons per day per apartment, it's not at all near what the, you know.
Which you would think it would be.
It's less than a house.
Yeah.
The typical, three-bedroom house, it was three hundred thirty gallons a day.
And it's sixty-four units. Um, some are two bedrooms, some are efficiencies. We read those meters every month, we go down and read them and if they aren't where they should be on daily usage, we send out notices, we find the leak and we fix it. I mean, we, we're very, we're always under the minimum.
Randy, eye and eye's a big thing, isn't it?
It absolutely is.
Yeah.
And, and we do, I do plan to reach out to the fourteen property owners that are adjacent to this project that may benefit them. Um, just let them know what's happening and that they have the opportunity to tie in, there's no requirement. You know, they don't wanna tie in, they don't have to, but it's, it's open for them when the time does come.
And also asking.
It's only a matter of time till one of those fourteen properties fails.
And I know at least one is, is, is looking for this ASAP and there may be others as well, so.
Yep.
And they'll ask where they want the stubs on the property.
Yes, we'll get their input as well in there.
Perfect.
So, and then once the town part is done, then we'll hook up, you know, go through ours and do that. We've had cameras down our septic lines to figure out where they come out of. I mean, we've done a lot of preliminary work just to be ready to really go with it, so we really appreciate everyone's help with it.
Well, now that we changed this, what we're gonna do, Mary, is I'm gonna have, um, the attorney look at it one more time.
Okay.
And prove it to form and when he does that with the board's vote, then the Chair will be able to sign it.
Okay, very good.
So, that's the process.
It changed by twenty-six dollars.
I know, it's the numbers.
But we appreciate it because this is business and, and government working together.
Yeah.
And we achieved something, you know, something positive, so this is great. It could always be this easy, I know it was a long process, but I wish it was always this easy in the end. Uh, we do have a, a positive recommendation from the Sewer Implementation Committee recommending the Select Board to, uh, to, uh, agree to this proposal. So, I need a motion to allow the Chair to sign.
Motion for the Chair to sign.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll sign it.
And when we get the okay, then it's signed, then we'll sign our contract with the town and with um Raymakers and and they can get ready to go.
Awesome.
Well, you'll be, you'll know, so you'll be the last one signing it, so you'll you'll know you're ready to do that.
Yeah, that'll be great.
All right, we thank you very much.
Very good, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
I'm.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Well, absolutely.
Randy, it looks like.
Anything else, any new business, old business, clear to go? I just have one old business and just it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A little bit, just uh I found out this week, I don't know if anyone else got copied on it, but I heard from the landowner, as some of you know, there was a potential project coming to that was looking at a parcel in Southwick for a fairly large um distribution warehouse to be located in our town. And we had a lot of people were involved in that project from town hall, from uh the utilities, from just about everybody around that could bring resources to bear and I think we made an excellent proposal for that project, unfortunately, we were not successful and um the company has decided to uh situate in Rome, New York. The press came out just this past week.
There's another million more state consent.
Yeah, and it what I was getting to was it basically came down to New York State came up with about a million, million and a half more dollars than the state of Mass did as far as the economic incentive. Looking at where Rome, New York is on the map off the freeway, it was not that much better as far as, you know, highway access than than we were, I think we had an excellent parcel, we had an excellent proposal and I wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you had put into it. You know, you were instrumental in working with us on the sewer piece and you know, some slight improvements and 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 all of that and working with the butter and you know, and we were trying to be, you know, it was a semi clandestine operation because they didn't want every, you know, word getting out about the project and and causing all kinds of fervor and rumor and so on and so forth, so um.
Fervor is a good word.
It's a three-letter word, right?
Yeah.
Not bad for a Jersey guy, but anyway. So I I just wanted to thank you for all the the work we did and you know, I think that that work's still gonna pay off because that property is much more marketable than it was when even when we started this project, so you know, hopefully we'll see another opportunity come our way.
Running for all of us, I think.
Yeah. Do you, Randy, do you get the sense that the uh landowner and the other budding landowner along the developer are working out that other deal for the future?
I did speak with one property maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And yes, there is um some paperwork drafted.
Between those parties?
Between the two parties, the landowner wanted to have that paperwork reviewed by his lawyer, so that's where it stood at that point, but it seemed like they were still more forward with with that that part, that part.
That'll be good to have that in place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
No, absolutely, thank you Randy, you do a good job, excellent job. All right, now you can go home.
Thanks for dropping by.
Yeah, thanks for dropping by for a little while.
Your kids are making dinner for you.
No, they're actually at uh VPS, they got, I'm I'm actually home a long time, so.
Oh, peace and quiet, meditate.
In unison.
Meditate.
There's the parents speaking.
All right, any other old business?
Uh let's see, the library um council is is hoping to finalize the closing on that this week, but they're trying to resolve a title, potential title issue with the research, with the buyer's attorney, so it may push it off a couple of weeks.
For the library?
For the old library? Yeah, even though it was all included in the information originally, so uh if need be, I will go and insure the facility for another month or so.
Did Ben get anywhere today with um?
We should talk about that though.
It is what it is.
Well, no, well, first of all, so Berkshire Avenue does not run through the property of the library, that's not the issue.
No.
I'm teasing.
Yeah.
And. No, but the um vacant property insurance.
Yeah, that's what I would have to, I I haven't read it yet.
Before we sign on to that, I mean, we realize that what we, what the value of the property was when we sold it, I grant it, there's a historical value to the property above it, but I don't know that that can't be duplicated if something were to happen to the parcel, so we sold the parcel for what, twelve thousand dollars?
Do we even need insurance on it for?
How much was the insurance policy, was almost six?
No, it was about twenty-four hundred.
Still, oh, twenty-five hundred dollars?
But that's for a year.
I get it, but you're gonna pay most of it upfront, I don't know, you just gotta really think about it, if that's worth money, worth it to do it.
But the twelve thousand you're selling it for gives them a structure that they renovate, you would not have a structure or something would not.
Right.
Still think you should talk.
Probably get twelve grand for a lot.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it was an empty lot, it might actually be worth fifty.
More, right, because there'd be no restrictions on it.
No historical restrictions on it at that point.
This one just goes, this Tom Ramon Heights is sixty-five thousand they're asking.
I was just thinking, I was just thinking exactly what you said, you know, if the building were there.
Don't insure it for a month, let it go.
Yeah, right.
What's the worst that can happen if it went up?
Before you spend money, you know.
If it's your pleasure for you not to do that, my only issue would be.
Let's get the thing closed up.
If my, well, it's only a couple of days and it's looking like it may not happen, so I I need to be able to go and do this. And then there's the issue of, you know, obviously, it's the buildings and grounds and slips and falls and then if you had to replace the structure, then at least.
We don't have.
Working with your committee to put a.
You would never replace that structure.
No, no, no.
You would never replace the structure.
How about we? Don't spend more than a hundred fifty bucks for thirty days worth of insurance.
Just to do demo on a structure, if something happened, it would be.
Yeah, but they'll be burnt down, so we're not gonna stop the fire if it happens.
Give me a hazmat.
They'll be there, they'll stop it, I I. Let me, let me just tell you the scenario I went through to tear down my house with the asbestos test. No, I know, I know, I know.
I, uh you're right, do what you gotta do, Carl.
Right.
Do a month.
Okay, thanks, just letting you know.
You have our guidance. Yes. Okay. Did Ben get anywhere with with our assessors today though, on that project?
I think his his initial research with them was they gave him the same stuff that he already had that may not be of use.
Gotcha, okay.
What's the title issue, do I draw it up?
It's, it's, I don't know, I didn't know if the clarity of it is that the buyer, his attorney had some questions. Finally getting them, they said they've had it for months, why are they just getting around about it?
Yeah.
Because Joe and I met with these people.
Well, I actually reached out after our conversation today too.
Oh, what did he say?
Same, basically.
Just tell, actually, all you gotta really do is just tell his attorney to accept the fact that what's done is done and just transfer it.
Well, that wasn't that elegant though.
You're a little unfiltered.
Tell you what.
And buy me iced tea for nothing.
If your method works, that's fine too.
All right, any other old business? Then we're moving on to new business, reorganize Channel Fifteen operations with volunteers and uh work with them on a stipend. I happened to run into our former uh Channel Fifteen individual and I told Art, you know, about how things were going, he says, yeah, I I noticed that uh things aren't done exactly the way I used to do them and I talked about the two-hundred-and-fiftieth coming up next year and recording things. Yeah. You know, and I said, Art, how you feeling? He says, I'm feeling much better and I said, would you consider uh helping us form a group to to uh expand the Channel Fifteen uh number of volunteers and so that we can have more coverage and he said he'd absolutely will, so.
Well, you already got one person, perfect.
Yep. All right, so we talked about this.
Three then, right, the existing one and Art and then.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's a start and uh and and hopefully expand out from there.
So would the board want to have Cindy and I draft something up asking for volunteers?
People interested in uh Channel Fifteen and uh and other other things, like, you know, I know that we uh asked Dennis to take over managing the town prior, but we might have volunteers that, you know, working with Channel Fifteen that might be able to help out with that too. Yeah, absolutely.
And that could be part of that list that you're sending around, maybe in place of fence viewer.
There you go, all right, so uh we talked about that during our work session and it looks like.
Now, in that posting, should we put down that the volunteers would be given a stipend of X amount or?
Well, that that.
Or you don't know yet how many.
We're looking for volunteers and that. Then go from there.
Possible stipends?
I wouldn't even put that into the city for volunteers.
Now, is this, maybe I missed this, but.
You might have.
You're looking for the volunteers, but this is basically for the two-fiftieth?
No, no, no.
No.
No, this is, I just said that, I when I was talking to Art, I was talking about if we got this thing going and had more people, more people how to, that knew how to use the cameras.
Okay, okay.
More people knew how to do the editing, more people that knew how to do programming, that this would help with covering our two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Right, right.
You know, with our our speaker program, our parades, all our festivities, so uh we would be looking for people that this isn't just for the two-fiftieth, but this is, right. Yeah.
Okay.
All these young kids, they're technology savvy, um Westfield Vocational's got a real nice program over there.
That would be like doing message, message scrolling and.
Sure.
Posting messages.
And we're looking at doing, you know, the part of the discussions we had during the budget process was, you know, funding some of the equipment needs that we need to install or to.
Which we are, we are working on.
Correct, to make it even more attractive to bring people in to do that stuff.
Right.
All right, and that moving right on along, another thing we discussed during our work session was we had uh met with the two gentlemen from uh Westfield with the fiber optics and we had at that time talked about forming a committee to look into it, so that if, that would be another uh press release that we'd be looking for a committee to be formed that would uh.
How many, were you thinking, three to five?
I was thinking five probably, you know, I think if you have a committee of five and and uh just, I mean, that's a a big mission, that's a very big mission.
I was envisioning then you'd probably, if you're gonna have, you'd assign them, you'd call them an ad hoc board, you'd assign them secretary.
Correct.
Right, and then they'd have to, once you bring them on and meet with them and discuss things with them and then vote to to select them.
Right.
Then you'd, you know, make sure that they know all the things that they have to know in terms of open meeting laws and all the normal things that municipal boards and committees do.
Right.
Because Cindy and I, we've got different applications, so we may be able to figure out somebody who could be a support person for them.
Yep.
Just like you, you know, you had for your um open space ad hoc committee.
Yep. All right, next thing is fiscal twenty appointments. Never appoint anybody.
I would go for the fire department.
Oh, no, the fire, all right, fire police, I get it, all these other little boards that.
Even emergency management.
Right. Oh, yeah. I mean, right, we normally do those three right away, automatically, but you're you're correct, we were sent a message. Yep. At the town meeting and and uh we're we're sending out, asking people if they'd like to be reappointed and if not, then we obviously have a vacancy, so we can publicize that. But but publicizing that there's all these appointments.
Right.
And and see if there is an interest uh for.
Get into my.
Someone that would like to uh come on board, so anyways, with that, would someone like to make a motion? We'll do fire first, it's, it looks like it's on top, somebody like to make a motion for the reappointment of the.
Fire department.
Fire department.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, what'd you just do?
Fire department.
Douglas made a motion, I seconded it.
Okay. Would would someone like to make a motion to reappoint emergency management?
I would.
I'll second that.
Along with all the other.
Yeah, that was the emergency management.
Auxiliary, races, cert.
Right, right, uh there's a motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We already took here the Clark Robinson and then we have Police Department, recommendation of Chief Bishop. Somebody like to make that motion?
Would the letters be accepted also?
Just a comment at the end, I mean, this is great, I and I'll gladly make the motion, but I think we should also recognize uh Reserve Officer Keith Strongham, AKA Smiley.
Yeah.
Um it's his birthday of sixty-five on this this week, so he's not gonna be reappointed as a reserve because he hit the retirement age.
There's a letter, I said that.
Yeah, I know, and it's in here, I just, I think it should be in the minutes, he's been with us for a real long time and is a great guy.
How how about if we invite Keith in?
I think we should.
I think we should too.
Cindy make a note for the.
Well, let's take the motion first.
Please.
In a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then Mr. Steinhardt, will you contact Chief Bishop and ask him if he'd like to present uh Reserve Officer Strongham to be recognized by the select board at some future meeting? And certainly tell him that his family is also welcome.
Don't worry about Bishop, he'll have half the time here. He does, he does that well.
So now that you've reappointed the police department, I gotta tell you a story, it just.
Okay, well, the tape recorder.
The tape recorder on.
So I don't know what legalities.
Did you do all the other police officers, just the front?
Okay, did everybody.
Did everyone.
So I was coming home from Westfield.
Even the puppy.
And I'm at the intersection of fifty-seven and Lugyard.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm gonna take a right to come back to town and on the corner of my eye, I see these blue lights and it pulls Officer Taggart into the property, right near Pioneer Dairy.
Yep.
Property in front, and look at, there's this guy who's trying to get this four-wheel motorized vehicle up onto his truck.
My employee, yeah.
Taggart stops, hey, you need some help buddy? And he goes running over.
Act of kindness.
I I was just like, you read this stuff, but you'd never witnessed it like I did and I said that, I said, did you just really do that? He's like, do what? It's my job, I said, no, that was really cool and he, I just thought it was great and I would like to, for you guys to know that.
Car number five, yeah, you're the second person.
No, it was um.
He, no, I know, it was my lawnmower.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. You know all about the whole story.
Cruiser's car number five.
But he was just um.
I had gotten a text saying, who's in car number five, the guy stopped and helped me on the lawnmower, you know?
He wouldn't.
And I listed all the names off, but Taggart wasn't on my list because I'm thinking school, wasn't even thinking.
No, he was just like, nah, 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 you don't need to say nothing to nobody, but I would, I thought it was just wonderful. You hear about this stuff or read about it or the new, you know, the news or whatever, but it happens a lot in our town and I was just, wanted to bring it to you guys' attention.
You didn't wanna stop and help the guy?
Oh, I stopped and pulled over.
Yeah.
I was watching, watching, I didn't even want to take a picture.
You weren't there, nah, 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 nah.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, it like changed my whole mood, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's a good, very good story.
Do that a lot, so.
Yeah. All right, so we're holding off on the other appointments until all the letters have been sent out.
Correct.
And then we can publicize openings.
Yep.
Do we have to do any of the other statutory employees though?
Well, you do have some statutory, you might have some.
So you you want me to give you some motions as we go?
Sure, sure.
So like animal inspector?
Well, that's nominated, so that one's fine, you actually, that's nominated by the commissioner of food.
Okay, so supervisor, director of assessment, supervisor of buildings and grounds, building inspector, alternate building inspector, alternate building inspector slash mutual aids, uh a hold off on C R and weights and measures, gas and plumbing, we're okay with that one?
No.
We're not okay there?
Right, because.
Not okay there, wiring inspector, we're okay?
Don't even, that's done through the town now.
It's appointed though.
Right, but I mean, Bob is uh was the.
Oh, you mean, you mean, we do that, we do that through Westfield, right Joe?
Right, right.
Okay, but Bob is the assistant.
Yeah, he is the assistant, yeah.
Uh let's hold off on the C A O.
C A O too.
Do the C R and weights and measures?
No.
The C A O specialist, the D P W director, special assistant to the D P W, D P W supervisor, tree warden and moth inspector.
That's pretty important.
Yeah, we need that, we got some monster moths around here.
Open space committee, they're working on stuff, right?
I'm not gonna do any committees just yet.
Okay.
Animal control.
Yep.
Yep, and you already had one of them that the chief took off.
Yep. Yep.
Which is game.
And we did the fire department.
Right.
But did anyone notice if the fire chief and the deputy chief were on that list?
On their own list?
They were on their own list?
Yeah.
I was just making sure.
Yep.
You don't wanna mess that up.
Right.
Okay, which is all that.
Fence viewer, you're taking it up?
Nope, we will never appoint another fence viewer, forest fire warden, graves officer. Chapter one forty-eight A, very important about the A, municipal hearing officer and the also very important parking ticket hearing officer. And the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission appointee.
Which is very important because they are in the process of interviewing and selecting a new.
Yeah, Mr. Brennan.
Executive Director and Alan at the department head meeting informed that he is participating and representing the town in that process.
So then also the um the planner, the town planner, we will reappoint.
Right, the associate, we have to do a roll call meeting.
Police dispatch, police dispatch part-time, the police chief, we did the police officers and reserve police officers.
Yeah.
And C M O we did.
Yep.
Uh cert we did, races we did. And um, how's it?
Twenty-fiftieth? Oh, you want to.
Uh, well, they're all, eh, let's hold off on that one.
Yeah, because they don't meet till September anyway.
And you might as well do the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Not do them or?
You do, you do.
Are we the only committee we do?
Right. Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, all that's in the form of a motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you for pointing that out Doug.
We want everybody to show up to work next week.